Meeting called to order. We are on to item A, City Manager's Report of Issues Raised at Prior Council Meeting. Okay. Item B, Special Events Applications.
The first application is for the Asbury Park Veterans Day Ceremony on Monday, November 11th in Veterans Park from 10:00 to 11:00. The second application for the Veterans Celebration won't be considered this evening. And there was one add-on for a youth pep rally. AYF would like to do that in Springwood Park tomorrow from 4:30 to 6:00. Are there any questions?
Thanks, Leisha.
Please, if you have some time, can you talk to AYF? Why don't they use the Hacksaw Stadium where they play at?
Okay. I would.
We are on to item C, Review of Agenda Items for the November 7th Regular Meeting.
Okay, there are two items on the consent agenda, two resolutions on the consent agenda. 2019-342, Resolution Approving the Special Event Applications. Resolution 343 is for accepting a 2005 Dodge Durango donation from Richard Lucas Chevrolet Subaru for the Police Department Street Crimes Unit. Individual Resolutions. 344 is a resolution approving the payment of bills. 345 is a resolution authorizing the transfer of appropriations in the fiscal year of 2019 budget. 346 is a resolution of the City of Asbury Park, Monmouth County, providing the insertion of special items of revenue for the 2019 budget. This allows the city to take a grant for police bulletproof vests and insert it into the budget. Resolution 347 is a resolution approving the insertion of special items of revenue in the 2019 budget. This is another grant for the Police Department, and it takes the grant money and it puts it into drunk driving enforcement. Resolution 348, authorizing the purchase of office furniture for the Police Department. Resolution 349, authorizing the purchase of computer equipment for the Police Department. Resolution 350, authorizing the award of a contract for the installation of network cabling for the Fire Department's communication system. Resolution 351, authorizing an agreement between Monmouth County and the Public Works for various road improvements. It's part of the shared services agreement. Resolution 352 is a resolution authorizing Monmouth County fiscal year 2017, '18 community development funds in the sum of $120,000. Resolution 353 authorizes the expansion of a place-to-place liquor license at 601-603, well, that's the name of the thing, the 601-603 Liquor License Partnership LLC. Ordinances for Introduction.
Kevin?
Yes?
What business is that? Do you know the name of the business at that address?
It's on Madison Avenue.
That is, um...
The Light.
The new, it's Leyla.
The Light or something like that.
Yeah, Leyla.
They have an existing, it's Rayla. There's, they have about three other businesses under that.
It's an expansion of yours.
It's an expansion of yours.
In their basement.
It's, the occupancy is less than 50 people. I believe it's set at 49 for that. Ordinances for Introduction. Order 2019-46, An Ordinance Adopting an Amendment to the Scattered Site Redevelopment Program, Phase 1A Redevelopment Plan. The owners of 405 Sewell Avenue want the property removed from the plan so that it can develop as an accessory parking lot for the building located at 407 Sewell. For Introduction, Ordinance 2019-47 is an ordinance creating within Chapter 4, General Licensing Section 4-27, film and photography permits of the code of the City of Asbury Park. This ordinance allows for the establishment of, for film and photography permits, for the process, and for a fee schedule for anybody that wants, any production company that wants to shoot movies in Asbury Park.
And there is one change, from what I understand, to be made to that ordinance before the council introduces it this evening. Mayor, it's one of the fees, correct?
Correct. Where it says, "Major Motion Picture Shooting for Six Days or More Daily Fee," it says $3,500. It was a typo, it should be $2,500.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Matters from the City Council?
Okay. Okay. Thanks. We are currently getting ready for the 2020 Census, and there are a number of jobs available that you can apply online going to 2020census.gov/jobs. And on Thursday, November 14th, at the public library, between the hours of 9:30 and 11:30, and also on Friday, the 8th, from 2:00 to 5:00, there will be people available to answer jobs, answer questions on the availability of jobs and what needs to be done in order to obtain one of these jobs. So here's an opportunity for residents to work on the census, and it's very important that the census be accurate because that determines how we receive monies from the federal government going forward. Also, I'm sorry, we have, oh, also, the next council meeting is going to be Tuesday, November 26th, instead of on a Wednesday because the Wednesday is the Thanksgiving Eve. So please come out on Tuesday, November 26th for the next council meeting. Thank you.
I don't think my mic is working. Can you hear me? Okay, fine. First of all, when I first got hired, became a part of this council, and Mike and Amy had asked me to take over there. I got it.
No, turn it upside down.
Okay. When the mayor and deputy mayor had asked me to take over the chairmanship of the Recreation Department, one of my main thoughts was to first bring everybody together. And last week at Trunk or Treat, I really saw how people could come together and how the Recreation Department was working. There's a lot of people I'd like to thank because I, it wasn't just me, okay? And I don't want anybody to get that impression. It was the Recreation Committee giving thanks to the mayor and council, special events. I talked to the Police Department, and they was a big help, believe me, and we thanked them and the Fire Department. But the people that gave candy, a lot of times we thought, it was a rod of candy, and Leisha just kept on going back upstairs, bringing more candy down. Leisha did a hell of a job on that, and everybody thanked you for it. The people that brought their cars, we say thank you to you. The people that donated candy, and the people that, and the citizens of Asbury Park. It was well-disciplined, and we was able to give candy away to 1,222 people, and that's just counting the kids. We didn't count the adults. So we're very thankful as Chairman of the Recreation Committee. Once again, Leisha, thank you, council, thank you, special event, and I hope I didn't miss anyone because there were so many people out there. Just glad to be a part of this. Thank you. Oh, there's, also, I think it was mentioned about the Veterans Day. Please, if you don't, you can pick up a flyer on the counter over there and try to make it always a well-put-together event. Thank you.
I also just want to, oh geez, that was really loud. I want to reiterate to the Recreation Commission and our city staff, Leisha, for doing a great job on trunk or treat. So I'm going to go through a list of these things. Bear with me. The city has initiated a senior chat. Thank you, Sonia, who's helped us get the word. So two council members, myself and Yvonne, or myself and Eileen, are going to all of the senior towers in Asbury Park to kind of get their city concerns and hopefully address any city concerns that they have. We've already done Comstock Court and Phillips Seaview. And this weekend, Yvonne and Eileen are hitting Lumley. So just another initiative to try to gather seniors' concerns and hopefully address them. I want to thank everybody who came out Saturday for Coffee with the Councilperson. Yvonne and I were out and got to meet some really great people and hopefully address some of their issues and get back to them with the issues we didn't have answers for right away. Asbury Park, we're banning plastic bags, January 1, 2020. I went to pick up candy at 7-Eleven, and none of them knew. So I think we talked about doing a flyer, and maybe when our specials are walking around any way downtown or on Main Street and Waterfront, that we would, you know, have them pop into some establishments to start getting that ball rolling. There's still people in town that don't know that we are banning plastic bags in 2020, January 2020. So maybe we could just follow up on that, Fred and Sonia, about having the specials just giving out, possibly giving out, you know, flyers about the banning of the bags. The city leaf collection has started and is going through December 31st, 2019. I hope everybody knows you don't need to bag your leaves. You just put them in the front and give DPW a call. They will come by. Free parking in Asbury Park on Veterans Day, which is Monday, the 11th. Free parking for the holidays on Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Again, another initiative to get people to come into town and drive local. So Saturday, November 30th, it starts from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., free parking throughout the city to come in and shop local. The City Council is having a public meeting on November 13th at 7:00 p.m. at City Council Chambers to get public input on the downtown parking garage. So come out to that, and that's it. I did.
Yeah, I just want to say to Jesse and the Recreation Committee, I think it's one of the best things we do all year. It's a fantastic event. So everybody who goes out there and volunteers and gives candy and helps the children and helps the city, thank you very, very much. Great event. Today's press, it's hard copy, I'm probably the only one who still gets it, had the best of the best. And there are many establishments recognized in Asbury Park. I didn't have time this afternoon to make a list, so I'm not going to name a couple and then forget a couple. Next meeting, I'll acknowledge them all, but there's one I'm going to acknowledge tonight, and that's the Asbury Park Fire Department for being one of the best of the best. And cannot thank you enough, Kevin. Please pass it on to all your workers and employees, and congratulations. It's a heck of a reward, and, you know, Asbury Park Press and all the readers think you're one of the best of the best. And there were so many acknowledged from Asbury Park. Next meeting, I'll have time, I'll list them, I'll announce them. Thank you, that's all I have.
We're on to matters from the City Manager.
Nothing at this time.
Matters from the City Attorney.
And I have nothing at this time either.
Take a short recess and...
Long recess.
The meeting will begin at 7:00.
Correct.
Councilmember Chapman, she's absent. Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
We are on to silent prayer, moment of reflection. Please stand.
We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231P on 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, the Star Ledger on January 2nd, 2019, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We're on to the public participation. Do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move it.
All in favor? Please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
Sylvia Sylvia, Director for the Chamber of Commerce. I have a couple of things. First, the Harold Daley VFW Post 1333, which is the Asbury Park chapter, will be hosting the annual Veterans Day Ceremony again this year. This year, they've decided to move it over to Veterans Park on Fifth Avenue. It will be at 10:00 a.m. on Monday. It'll be a short ceremony, but very impactful. They'll be presenting a certificate of service appreciation along with donation to the families of two of the fallen heroes in Asbury Park, one from the Asbury Park Police Department. That would be Detective April Byrd, as well as the family of Asbury Park Fire Department, firefighter John Anastasia. So we'll be there at 10:00. Hope that everybody that is available can come and join us. It should be about 30 to 40 minutes. And then I've got some copies of the flyer, if it's okay. I'll leave them here for anybody who'd like to pick them up. Put them over on the table. Also, okay, so the chamber will be holding our annual holiday decorating contests. Again, we do one for the businesses and one for the residents. The registration for businesses is, deadline is November 30th. The deadline for residences are, is December 2nd. We do this to help brighten up and show off our Asbury Park spirit to each other and to our visitors during the holiday season. We have prizes in several different categories, but this year we added a new category for both the residential and the business contests, the best use of recycled or repurposed materials. We have a blue ribbon panel of judges, so I'll be reaching out to them again this year to see if they will help us out again. I think that's about it. We could use some help in reaching out to the residents. I have all of the business contacts, but I don't generally have a resource to reach out to the residents. Again, this is free for businesses and for residents. You do not have to be a member of the chamber if you're a business in order to participate. And it just, sometimes we're a little bit low on the number of participants in the resident category because I just don't have the method of communicating to everybody that lives within town. So if I can leave some flyers and maybe get it up onto the city's website, that would be terrific also. End of me.
Sylvia, before you leave, grab a couple of the free holiday parking flyers that we have out. So we'll be doing free parking again, starting November 30th through, you know, Thanksgiving through January 1 of 2020, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Saturdays. So if you can help us spread the word amongst your businesses, that would be great. And I think, we have some flyers over there? Okay. Take my flyer.
I can make sure that I, I'll get that out in emails to our businesses, but then we'll also promote it through, we've got a fairly extensive consumer database. It's just not, our consumers aren't necessarily all within Asbury Park. So we can make sure that we get them out to all of our...
Yep, I'm going to give you my copy, and I'm sure Sonia will follow up as well. 9 to 6, yes.
And that's citywide?
Citywide, Saturdays. So everybody has no excuse not to shop on Saturdays in Asbury Park.
That's good.
Yeah, thank you. Sure?
Number one question is, how come we don't have a police blotter in the coaster every week? We used to have it, we don't have it anymore. I called up the coaster and asked, and she said that she can't get it. Is there a reason? That's number one. Number two, this is a public building, right? I think you should have asked the public before you decided to do. I'm one person that really resents the fact that you're painting this building. It's white brick. It should be clean, I agree, but not, no artwork on it. This building belongs to the public. It doesn't belong to individuals. And if you think flowers or, I don't know what that thing is on the front, I haven't looked at it closely, but I think that that's not the right thing to do. This is not somebody's personal house. This is a public building, and it should be treated as a public building. And I really resent the fact that they're painting it all up and decorating it. I don't think it's necessary. It's nice that you planted all the flowers and everything, but the bushes were nice too. But if you want flowers, it's fine, you got to water them, it's okay. But other than that, I think it's terrible that this public building is being looked like I don't know what. And all over town, there's buildings that are really scary, the way, especially an apartment house on 7th Avenue. It's awful, it's distracting. I'm not permitted to drive right now, but if I was driving, that would be a distraction. And that's it. Does anybody know why we don't print the police blotter? I see Allenhurst, I see Deal, but not Asbury.
Rita, I can't answer that. Kevin, can you look into it and have somebody get in touch with Rita?
Okay, this is nice.
Thank you.
So will I get an answer?
Yes, yes. Kevin's going to look into you, and someone will look into it, and someone will get back to you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Peter Siegel, 7th Avenue, and I just wanted to thank you guys for treating this public building like in fact it is a public building and caring about it and having the painting done. It just, the beautification is amazing. The Public Arts Commission that you guys have formed, and it's very active now, I think it's just so great, and it really represents the direction that this city's been going in and has been really wanting to take for so long. The public art is amazing, it's unique to the city. It's one of the distinctive features about the city, and so the fact that you chose to do it on this building, this public building, is just, what a great decision that was. And just thank you so much. And I think all those apartment houses that are painted with murals, they look fantastic as well. And I hope there's more of them to come. And I just, again, wanted to thank you guys for that because you're the ones that created the Public Arts Committee that vote on and establish all of this great public artwork. And just, it's a good job you guys are doing, so thank you.
Thank you.
Pam Lamberton, Sunset Avenue. I was wondering if you could give us a status of the boardwalk, how it's coming along. There was nothing being done, and then all of a sudden there was stuff being done, and now maybe nothing's being done again, or do you have any information on the schedule? That's it.
The report we got yesterday and today was, come Monday, they're supposed to start driving the pilings for the boardwalk. Where the pilings they drove were test pilings to see if they could go with 25-footers, or they had to go with deeper ones. So the test pilings are done, and Monday, they're supposed to start all the pilings for the boardwalk.
Okay.
We found that out either yesterday or today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I use that time?
No.
Ernest, we're only four on the Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park, New Jersey. I can't agree more about the artwork around the city. I mean, I think it's terrible. And this building's starting to look terrible. Okay, I'm here because I need to give the city attorney six subpoenas, okay? So I know you like to be served here, so I'll do it that way. So Kevin Ketti, Fred Refredo, Michael Capabianco. I feel like I'm giving out awards. John Moore. By the way, I'd like to let the public know, and everybody listening on television, in front of the council, the clerk, the mayor told me to go F myself, and he was making references like I was crazy, but we were off the record, but I say it on the record for everybody out there. I hope this goes to 10,000 homes, and I made a police report right there. So we'll deal with that later. And I guess while I'm doing this, I'd like to talk about how, again, last night, my cars have been busted mirrors, you got drunks and criminals in these bars coming out, the police aren't doing anything. Last night, they took one out of a bar, drunk, brought him to another bar, and they smashed all the mirrors on my cars. I can't get a police report, the police won't come over and investigate, they won't give us the films around here. If we ever get the films of what's going on around here, forget about it. It'll be like the, what was that, the Halloween melee. And I got to admit, I got the film from someone upstairs, I was there. That is the biggest disgrace in this country, the response and everything. Watch the film. Almost out of time. I think that's it. Amy Quinn, John Moore, Michael Capabianco, Fred Refredo, Kevin Ketti. Can I serve these, Council? Thank you.
I'm not finished.
I don't think my ears get smashed because he's drunk.
Oh, no, please, it's his time. You had your time.
You know what? That's Peter Siegel, that's another one I'm going to tell the police because he's threatening people.
Ernest, don't, Ernest, don't waste your three minutes, please. Thank you. Okay, next.
Louise Murray, Grand Ave, in Asbury Park. A lot of stuff goes on in Asbury, such as the mess with for Halloween. The police always have to be there to take care of it. They clean it up. They clean up a lot of messes. They're always there, if there's a fight, they'll take care of the drunks, they'll take care of the community. And I've always said that a good city is if it's safe and if it's clean. Public works does a good job, and certainly the police do. Let's talk about paint. Comes to my mind that maybe they should get some recognition, our police department. And it's been said that some towns honor them by painting a blue line, Pick Street, Main Street, whatever, in honor of our police department, because it's also been said, if you're a policeman in Asbury Park, five years, you may as well be a state trooper because it's that serious. I mean, this is not, this is not an easy job. This is not a cakewalk. This is no walk in a park, no reflection on our neighboring towns like Deal or Allenhurst, where you go and you mark the tires with the chalk. I mean, that's the extent of their danger or whatever else may be. So, getting back to the paint, we talk about painting buildings and private buildings and what have you. Let's get a little artistic and honor our police department, and maybe we could do a blue line down the street in honor of them. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. Motion to close?
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
We are on to minutes. I have the minutes of the executive session of October 23rd, municipal council work session October 23rd, municipal council regular meeting October 23rd. Do I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to the consent agenda resolutions. We have a resolution approving special events application. We have Resolution 2019-343, accepting a 2005 Dodge Durango donation from Richard Lucas Chevrolet Subaru. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
With one exception. Can I vote yes on the rest of, instead of voting on the pep rally? Vote no on the pep rally.
Oh, separate out the pep rally.
Do you want to pull the pep rally from the special events application?
No, 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 pull it, just an individual vote. Right.
Excuse me, yes.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to individual resolutions. We have Resolution 2019-344, a resolution approving the payment of bills. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
On to Resolution 2019-345, a resolution authorizing the transfer of appropriations in the fiscal year 2019 budget. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-346, a resolution of the City of Asbury Park, County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of special items of revenue in the 2019 budget of the City of Asbury Park pursuant to NJSA 40A:4-87, Chapter 159, Bulletproof Vest. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-347, a resolution of the City of Asbury Park, County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of special items of revenue in the 2019 budget of the City of Asbury Park pursuant to NJSA 40A:4-87, Chapter 159, Drunk Driving Enforcement Fund. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-348, authorizing the purchase of office furniture for the police department. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-349, a resolution authorizing the purchase of computer equipment for the police department. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-350, authorizing the award of a contract for the installation of a network cabling for the fire department. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 351, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Monmouth County Department of Public Works for the reconstruction of various roads via existing shared service contract. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Council, second. Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yep.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-352, a resolution authorizing the de-obligation and reprogramming of Monmouth County Fiscal Year 2017 and Fiscal Year 2018 Community Development Funds. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-353, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Asbury Park, authorizing the expansion, a place-to-place transfer of 601-603 Flicker License Partnership LLC, license number 130332060012. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to ordinances. Ordinances for introduction. We have Ordinance 2019-46. It's an ordinance adopting an amendment to the scattered sites redevelopment program, Phase 1A redevelopment plan, with a public hearing date of November 26th. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Ordinance 2019-47, an ordinance creating within Chapter 4, general licensing, Section 427, film and photography permits of the code of the City of Asbury Park. There's been an amendment to this under the fees, under Section 4-27.5, under fees, filming of six or more days. It's listed as 3,500. That's a typo. It should be 2,500. Do I have a motion to introduce?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.